Good evening. We'll call to order the November 17th, 2020 City Commission Organizational Meeting, and we'll start the meeting by going to our city attorney, Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Colby. Commissioner members, it's always a pleasure to be here. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. Congratulations to everybody, and glad we have everybody back. So this is our first meeting of the new commission. This is organizational in nature, so it should be relatively short. We do have a request by the mayor to attend the meeting virtually because he's unable to attend in person due to extraordinary circumstances. So, very quickly, the law on meeting requirements is that ordinarily, we have to have meetings in person, and that means we have to have a quorum in person. During the pandemic, the governor, as you may recall, suspended that requirement, and it allowed us to hold meetings virtually. He did that by executive order. That executive order expired on November 1st. Aside from that, many, many years ago, the Attorney General issued several opinions on the ability of an absent member of a board or committee or commission to attending to attend a meeting virtually. And he has issued several opinions that essentially says that in certain extraordinary circumstances, as determined by the board, that a member may attend a public meeting virtually as long as there is a quorum physically present at the meeting site, and as long as the extraordinary circumstance is essentially one related to a medical or health issue, or disability, or some other extraordinary circumstance determined by the board. So that's the principles and a criteria by which we're here this evening on the mayor's Another component is that the meeting room be set up in a fashion that allows the absent member to participate audio, or visually, or both with the public and with the commission. And so the city staff has taken measures to make sure that that has happened. You know, I'm of the opinion that the mayor meets all of those requirements. I know he has a few words that he would like to share with you this evening as well. So with that objection, and with the consent of the commission, you can just simply give your consent to allow the mayor to participate virtually, and then that will satisfy that requirement. I see a nodding of the head, so we're fine there. And with that, I will pass the baton over to Mayor Partington and ask if he has any comments that he would like to share.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy, and thank you all for joining us tonight, whether in person or virtually like myself. These are unusual times, and while I would love to be there celebrating with my fellow city commissioners this evening, I've seen some pictures from the courtyard earlier this evening, and it just looks beautiful out there, a perfect night for a swearing-in ceremony. I have recently tested positive for COVID-19, and I'm quarantining accordingly. I'm very grateful to have had only mild symptoms so far, and I'm hopeful that this will continue. And just a quick reminder, make sure we all do our part to stop the spread by washing our hands frequently, wearing a mask, and social distancing. But for now, let's get to the business at hand.
Thank you. If you'd now please rise for the invocation given tonight by Reverend Jeff Beebe.
Let us pray. God, we come before you this night in the midst of a world, and a nation, and a state, and a county, and a city that finds themselves in unfamiliar territory, and we still find ways to navigate and negotiate this new way of being. So we do lift up our leaders to you, especially in this community this night, that they would receive the wisdom to make the decisions that are right, that they would receive the support from the community and from the city staff, that they might be able to make decisions that make living in this community as good as it has been, and perhaps even better. So we do lift this night before you, a special night in the midst of crazy and at times uncertain times. But we do lift it up to you, and we lift up these leaders, and we lift up this city of Ormond Beach. We give you thanks. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'd like to welcome Judge Robert Sanders to administer the oath of office to Mayor Partington.
Mayor Partington, can you hear me okay?
Oh, he's unmuted.
You're muted. I've been doing this in court, yeah.
Somebody, yeah, somebody muted me.
We got him.
I can hear you, Your Honor, and thank you for being here.
Okay, my pleasure. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yes, sir.
I do solemnly swear.
I do, I, Bill Partington, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States of America and of the state of Florida.
Of the United States of America and the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
The duties of mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. And, Colby, I guess at this point, you're going to return the meeting over to me?
Yes, I will virtually pass you the gavel.
That's right. Thank you so much. And we will now move to item number five, the oath of office to the city commissioners.
Hold on for a second.
There you go.
Thank you, Judge. Yes, sir. Okay, each of you, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States of America and the state of Florida.
Of the United States of America and the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of city commissioner.
The duties of city commissioner.
Of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
Of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
And we are going to hold tight here just for a moment because, did you say something was coming? So I'll go ahead and start, but we're going to stay up here, we're going to call our families up, and we have something for our families this evening. So Heather and Wyatt and my sister Sue, come on up here with me, please, and thank you very much. And while you're coming up and standing right here, let's see what we have. Thank you very much. Heather. Thank you. Yes. Nope. And you'll hang on to that. Today is a special day in the city of Ormond Beach, and I first just want to thank the residents of Ormond Beach. I want to thank my fellow commissioners and Mr. Mayor. Judge, thank you for being here. Pastor Beebe, we appreciate you immensely. And now to my family that's here tonight, to my wife, Heather, thank you for that loving support, day in and day out. I appreciate you more than you know. To my boy Wyatt, who is fighting me on a haircut, but he's winning. He is winning, and I told him, as long as you want to let it grow, you've got it at this age. Thank you, son, for being with your dad every step of the way, for making our family proud, and being honestly the best kid I know. And to my sister Sue, you know, you have been there with your baby brother and all your siblings from the time I was brought into this world. And you're here tonight, and our parents aren't here because they're concerned about what's going on with COVID, and I know that, you know, it's the first one they've missed, and they're sad because of it, but you're representing the rest of the Kent and the Thompson family, and I want you to know I love you and I thank you for being here, sis. Yeah. And I'm going to pass it over to Commissioner Selby now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kent. Honey, would you please come up? So I invited my girlfriend tonight. I'm a lucky guy, I've been married to my girlfriend for 30, was it 38? 30? 37? It'll be 38 years in March, sometime in March. I got it on my calendar, I'm not sure what the date is. No, I love you, babe, and thanks for putting up with me.
This is over.
Turn it over to Commissioner Persis.
Thank you. Could my family please come up? Carl, my husband, my grandson Doyle, please come up here, my granddaughter Olive, my son Clark, and my daughter-in-law Mallory. And I have so many friends out here. I have so many friends here to support me tonight, and I appreciate it more than you know. I just want to give you all a shout-out. You know, I appreciate you being here. I love you all very, very much, and you know that. First of all, gosh, I have some things to give out, I think, yes. Oh, yeah, I'll let you hold that for Doyle, okay? And, oh my gosh, this is beautiful. Okay, this is for, hold on, I'm going to give you that. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and this is for Olive. And that's for Clark. Clark, that's for you. Okay, okay. Stand right here by grandpa. Stand right here by grandpa. Okay, first of all, I would like to thank my fellow city commissioners for, gosh, just, we just work so well together, and I just want to thank you all so much for your support and for your kindness and for your words of wisdom. I think we are a great team, I'm so proud to work with each and every one of you. I'm sorry the mayor can't be here tonight, but he's doing the right thing by staying home, as we all know. He's a great mayor, and I'm so glad that we're all back here together for another two years. I couldn't have wished for anything more than that, so I'm just very pleased with that. And first of all, I want to say, my grandson Doyle is right here. Doyle, can you wave to everybody, please? Doyle's in pre-K, and he is just, he's the sweetest boy that I have ever known, and he's just the apple of my eye. And this is Olive, who's like 15 months old now, and she is, she's named after me and Mallory's mother, both of her grandmothers, so she's got a lot of support, too. And my son Clark here, I'm just so proud of he and Mallory, my daughter-in-law, for just raising their kids and doing such a fabulous job and working hard. They're just a fabulous family, and I admire all you do for your children and for your family, and just how your work ethic is at both of your jobs, and I'm just very proud of you, and I love all of you very much, very, very much. And my husband Carl, we will celebrate our 30th anniversary in December, and I can't believe it's been 30 years, that's just like crazy, you believe that, Clark? Clark was, looked like that when we got married. And we've just had a wonderful 30 years, and I appreciate everything you do for me, you do put up with me, very, you know, you do.
That's on the record.
Yeah, you do, and I do appreciate you more than you know, and I love you more than I can tell you, and I want to give you these flowers. But thank you all very much.
Chevelle, would you please come forward, stand at attention in front of everyone?
No problem.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, sure. Oh, they're going to take a picture. Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, no, he wants his thing. But here you go, babe. Yes, yes, yes. I first want to thank this commission and the mayor. We make an awesome team, and being up here again for another two years is one of the honors of my life. It used to be the greatest honor of my life, but I have been married now for almost a year, and that is now the greatest honor of my life, and I love you, babe. You know, on the campaign trail, I would sometimes get votes, Chevelle would always get me votes, and if she would have ran, she would have gotten more votes than me. And, but thank you, babe. This is your first campaign, and you did well, and thanks for putting up with me. I also want to thank other family members here, my brother, who's my social media guru, and other members of the campaign worked very hard, and I'm very proud of the campaign we did. And I'm excited for the next two years. We have a lot to accomplish, especially in these uncertain times, and I'm glad I'm doing it up here. Thank you.
Colby, if you can just let me know when everybody's settled back in their seats on the dais.
Okay.
Good to go?
Yep.
I want to, at this time, just in keeping with the recognizing family and giving out the flowers, I know my mom and dad are there in the audience, and also my sister Dawn and brother-in-law Dyson, if y'all would stand and be recognized. Thank you so much. You guys know I love you very much, and also my wife Lori, who is here at home, and my three beautiful daughters. CJ, I think, is listening online down in Miami, and then Anne and Faith here in Ormond Beach. So the entire family for me is a source of constant support and stability in my life, and all the extended family as well, they're so much a part of all the joy that I have in my life, and I really, really appreciate you guys and love you very much, and just want to let you know that. So I can't thank you enough, but I do want to say thank you and know that you're loved and appreciated. And then I've got some other comments, just as the commissioners may, and I'll save those for our normal comment time at the end of the meeting. And so at this time, we will move to nominations for deputy mayor.
Resolution number 2020-168, a resolution electing the deputy mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, establishing terms and conditions of service, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-168, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And are there nominations for deputy mayor?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Susan Persis for deputy mayor.
Well, gosh, I'll be happy to second that.
All right, any other, I heard Susan Persis, any other nominations? In that case, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Congratulations to our new deputy mayor, Susan Persis.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you.
At this time, she will step down and take the oath of office.
Third time's the charm. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States of America and the state of Florida.
Of the United States of America and the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of deputy mayor.
The duties of deputy mayor.
Of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
Of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Next on our docket is audience remarks, and I don't have any cards, from what I can tell from the city clerk, we still have not received, still have not received any cards at this time. So we will move on to the consent agenda. The action proposed is stated for each item on the consent agenda, and unless a commissioner removes an item, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No, mayor, but I'll move the consent agenda.
And I'll second the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, properly moved, and Commissioner Kent, properly seconded. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and 9A.
Resolution number 2020-172, a resolution affirming the certification of the Volusia County canvassing board regarding the results of the regular municipal election conducted in the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, declaring the results of said election and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-172, read by title only.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of resolution number 2020-172.
Second the motion.
Great move by Commissioner, our deputy mayor, Persis, and seconded by Commissioner Littleton. I'm pretty much ready to vote. I just wanted to congratulate everybody. There were strong margins of victories. I looked over each of the precinct results, and everyone was comfortably re-elected, and I think that says wonderful things about this commission, so I just wanted to congratulate everybody. I didn't know if anyone else had any comments. If not, we will, Colby, if you would, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and 9B, please.
Resolution number 2020-173, a resolution of the city commission, also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, appointing a chair and vice-chair to the Ormond Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, establishing terms and conditions of service and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-173, read by title only.
Great. Is there a motion?
So I'll move the mayor as chair, and I'll move the deputy mayor as vice-chair.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Selby and seconded by deputy mayor Persis. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, thank you, and that is the majority of the little bit of work that we had to do tonight completed, and we will now move to reports, suggestions, and requests. And, Colby, I know we had emailed earlier about who was going to start, and you got to forgive me for not remembering, and I've got so many different electronic devices open right now, I don't know where to find it, so if you could...
It was Commissioner Kent.
Perfect. Commissioner Kent, you'll be recognized, and then we'll just go down the line as usual.
Sure. I just, again, want to say thank you to my family, thank you to the residents of Zone 2 for this great privilege. These are, I remind my family that these are rented seats, and it's incredible that I've been up here 17 years. I'm looking forward to the next two years, and then, of course, I'm looking forward to what comes after that. So with that, I'll say have a great evening, everybody, and stay safe.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank, again, my friends for attending tonight that are here to support me, and my family that were here means a great deal to me. I am very thrilled and honored to be elected deputy mayor, but I have to say, I have big shoes to fill. I still call you Deputy Mayor Kent. You are amazing, and I've learned a great deal from you by listening to your comments and the way you handle yourself, and I just want to thank you for being a great role model, and I just really admire you, so I just wanted to say that to you and your family. Have a wonderful family out there. I am just very excited to represent Zone 3 for two more years, and I was very fortunate not to have an opponent, and that doesn't happen very often when you're an elected official, it rarely happens, so I don't take it for granted. I know everybody else up here, including the mayor, had to work really, really hard, long hours, so I know you're all glad it's over, and you won well, and you did a great job, so congratulations to everyone, and I hope all of you have a safe Thanksgiving holiday, and we'll see you back in a few weeks. Good night.
Thank you, deputy mayor, and Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, mayor. It is quite an honor to be up here again with this commission. I do want to thank the citizens of Zone 4 for putting me up here for another two years. I promise to work as hard as possible for the citizens of Zone 4 and for the entirety of the city. With that, I'll wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you for the party tonight.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Littleton, Commissioner Selby.
I guess I'll have to ask Chevelle where the party is. You don't seem to know where the party is. She'll probably be driving anyway, she's your designated driver. Okay, well, first of all, I just wanted to say congratulations to not only those of us that are up here, including the mayor, but also to the other candidates who ran. This was a very challenging campaign season, you know, we really, it was just so different, and so highly charged, especially on the national level. So, you know, congratulations to everybody, you know, a good friend of mine years ago said, "You get the government you deserve, or you get the government you deserve." And that's really all about turnout, it's really about participation. And in Zone 1, the turnout was 85%. 85%. In Volusia County, it was over 77%, the highest turnout ever in Volusia County by about two points. So there's a highly motivated, highly involved, highly caring electorate out there, citizens who care about our community, care about our city, care about our county, care about our state and our nation, and that's very exciting. And that's very exciting, because it hasn't always been that way. I mean, there have been many times when turnout wasn't anywhere near that level. And I just want to say thank you to my wife, and to my family, and to my supporters. This is an honor to serve, to represent you, and I like the way Commissioner Kent says it. This is effectively a rented seat. We don't own it, you know? And my job here is to serve the entire community, and I hope I do that well. One thing you can always count on from me is I will speak the truth. I'll tell you what's on my heart and what's on my mind, and that's what's going to guide me. And if that isn't in keeping with what the voters want, that's their prerogative, and they get to put somebody else in this chair. And so I respect that completely, and I hope that they will respect my views and my opinions also. So thank you. With that, I'll say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I guess I'd say gather in small crowds, but, no, but the key is that, you know, we all got to work together to defeat this thing. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, and now we'll go to city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to extend my deepest congratulations to you. Your city staff stands ready to help you accomplish your goals and objectives in the next two years and move our community forward, so good luck, and let's get to work.
All right. Thank you, Joyce, and next is assistant city manager Claire Whitley.
Congratulations again to all of you. Just want to let you know I feel fortunate to work for truly the role model of city commissions in our county. So I look forward to the next two years, thank you.
All right, and thank you, Claire. City attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just echo everything that Joyce and Claire said. Congratulations to all of you. I look forward to serving for you and with you, serving our community for the next couple of years. So welcome back, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Randy. And I'll wrap up here with just a few comments. I want to thank my fellow citizens for re-electing me as Ormond Beach's mayor for another term. It is an amazing honor to be elected mayor in the city that I grew up with, grew up in. We have a great city, and I'm going to continue working hard to make it even better. I want to thank Reverend Jeff Beebe for taking the time out from his schedule and his family tonight to be with us. It was an honor to have him provide the blessing for us. I'd also like to recognize again, and thanks so much, we have a great bench in Volusia County, the Seventh Circuit, really, but Volusia County Court Judge Rob Sanders for taking time out of his very valuable time and schedule to join us and do us the honor of swearing us in tonight. We are proud of Judge Sanders, because he's a local boy, an Ormond Beach boy, in my opinion. I don't know. I just, it's exciting to me that we have so many great jurists in our city and connected to our city and otherwise. So thank you for being here and taking that time. Looking forward, there's challenges facing Ormond Beach, and Commissioner Selby hit on it with what a challenging election this was. Election season, elections are competitions, they're battles of ideas, and now we move away from that, we step off the field of competition, because the campaigns are over, and we move into a governing mode. And I'm excited to do that with each of you commissioners, again, for two more years. And I look forward to the challenges that lie ahead, and I think we're up to them, and we will work through them well. I know this commission and I will work with our neighboring communities to be certain that their developments don't flood our roadways with traffic and interrupt our wonderful way of life here in Ormond Beach. We will always continue to seek beautification, grants for our city, and to improve our recreation facilities, honoring, working to honor our veterans and first responders, police, fire, public works, and showing appreciation for the hard work they do and that they have done and will continue to do is going to be, it'll always be a priority. I just know the heart of this commission, and we will continue to do that. And so I look forward to that. Keeping taxes low is always important. The pandemic is putting pressure on our revenues, and as we all pray for a good vaccination to be available early next year, there's going to be lagging financial effects for the next few years as we all get back on our feet. And that will be a prime commission focus as we work to manage to provide the quality services that our residents insist upon and deserve while at the same time balancing the budget, which is always a primary goal. Our slow and controlled growth posture will always remain in place in Ormond Beach. I believe we've done it better than almost any city in Volusia County, but we have to stay ever vigilant and be very careful and cautious with the decisions we make. And I know this commission will do that. And then finally, looking forward, I think it's likely that this commission will seek additional citizen input for strategic land issues and possible purchases, which will contribute to improving our quality of life and assuring the right types of development. There are grants, there are partnerships, there are all kinds of opportunities out there, and I look forward to exploring those. I know the bottom line is working together, we can and we will make Ormond Beach even better. I did, I thanked my family. I just wanted to share one quick anecdote. During the campaign, it was probably 1:30 in the morning, and I was in a pickup truck with my dad. And earlier, I had been thinking, you know, what, and you had, you know, my fellow commissioners know, you go through ups and downs during a campaign. There's elation, and then there's concern, and then there's so much hard work, and you have different thoughts. And earlier in the evening, I was thinking, you know, what am I doing? I'm a grown man, fifty-some years old, and I'm out sticking signs in people's yards and moving signs or whatever it is. And, but by the time 1:30 rolled around, and I looked over next to my dad, and I thought, this is exactly what I'm doing. I love spending time with my dad, and I'm lucky to get to do it. And we finished up at about 2:00 or 2:30 that evening, but just reaffirmed my overall enjoyment to the campaign process, and I wanted to share that with you all as a little anecdote. Also, a couple nights later, it was almost 1:00 in the morning, and I was with my daughter in the same pickup truck, we were pulling up signs at that point. But it's a lot of work, and people don't realize what's involved. But that was a special time, getting to spend time with her and talking about politics and government, and so I appreciate that as well. In closing, thank you again for the support you've shown me, and I will continue to work tirelessly to earn your respect and confidence. And with that, we will say good night, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.